Thank you. We have a quorum. Trustee Dunlap could not be with us this evening. But Board, what I would do is entertain a motion to move Tab Two up on the agenda. We have a lot of people here waiting for a specific celebration, so I think it'd be the kind thing to do. Do I have a motion?
You know, I'd like to make a motion to move Tab Two up to the next item on the agenda. I'm a little hesitant to do that because I know we're gonna lose our entire audience for the rest of the meeting. But nonetheless, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, if we could do Tab Two or Action: Tenure Awards for 2019, Dr. Lita Burns. And Dr. Burns, what I'm gonna ask you to do, as you go through each candidate, the Board will make a motion individually on each candidate.
Chair Wood, members of the Board, Dr. McLennan, Mr. Lyons, colleagues and guests. It is my pleasure to present to you this evening the candidates for consideration of tenure. If I may, I would like to invite the faculty up to stand with me. So those who are being considered for tenure, if you would come stand in front of this sign. So we'll be here right in front of the North Idaho College sign. Thank you very much. And while they're doing that, I do want to thank the college campus community for coming and demonstrating your support for these tenure candidates. For those who are not familiar with the tenure process at NIC, I will briefly describe it. Faculty hired into a tenure track position are asked to form a faculty evaluation team, commonly referred to as an FET. The team includes at least one member, a tenured faculty member from their division or discipline, and another faculty member who might be from any place on the college campus community. The new assistant professor is evaluated once each semester by members of their FET, Faculty Evaluation Team, and by their division chair. Additionally, new faculty members are evaluated by students in each section of every course taught during the three probationary years. The tenure candidate also writes an annual self-evaluation. At the end of the first year of instruction, the faculty evaluation team and the division chairs meet to review all the evaluations that have been written. The division chair and the team then meet with the tenure candidate, discuss his or her progress, and to provide constructive feedback aimed at improving instruction. This evaluation and review process continues during each of the three probationary years. In the fall of the fourth probationary year, the faculty evaluation team makes a formal recommendation for or against conferral of tenure. The division chair also makes a formal recommendation for or against tenure. The tenure candidate is asked to prepare a portfolio which contains copies of every evaluation that has been written in the three prior years and all the recommendations related to the tenure process. The portfolio is submitted to the tenure committee for review, and the tenure committee elicits public comment for tenure candidates from across the campus community. Members of the tenure committee review the portfolios and make recommendations to the vice president for instruction for or against tenure. I then have the opportunity to read the candidate's portfolio. And this is a rigorous experience for me, but it is also an extremely informative experience. I will assure you that I read every evaluation word by word. I also read every student comment from every single course, from every single section, word for word. Sometimes up to four and a half hours on a particular portfolio that get rather lengthy. But I appreciate the work that is required to do this and the knowledge that I gain about the faculty member through this process. It's a part of my job, and it's one of the better parts of my job, because I feel like at the end I really get to know the candidates very well. So, teaching effectiveness is obviously the area of emphasis for tenure review. However, the faculty are also evaluated on educational qualifications, professional growth, ability to meet contractual responsibilities, professional ethics, and continuing performance. In each of these members' files, you will find evidence of how they have personally and professionally invested in student success. It is my pleasure to recommend to Dr. McLennan and to present to you the following faculty requesting your consideration for conferral of tenure. I will now address them individually. Mr. Damian Carries, math faculty. Kyries, I wrote down. Kyries is how you pronounce it correctly. Sorry.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Oh. Yeah. There's a motion, there's a second, there's a discussion, right?
We don't need it.
No, there's no discussion.
Not on this.
Thank you. I'm sick tonight, but I want this to be special for you. Alright.
Did I just hear her ask for discussion?
No, I didn't. I removed that. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Erin Claude, English faculty.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the tenure of Erin Claude.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Jen Erickson, Art faculty.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Jen.
Brittany Heidenmark. May I just make a comment that Brittany was unable to be here today because she was in clinicals all day and totally exhausted at the end of this day, so she was unable to make it. But I just want you to know, she's not present this evening, but she had a really good excuse. She was with students all day long in the hospital.
Sounds good to me.
Nursing faculty.
Alright.
I would like to make a motion to approve the tenure of Brittany Heidenberg.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Casey Kealan, Computer Application Office Technology faculty.
I would move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Congratulations, Casey. Motion approved.
Which person was that?
Casey.
Jeremy Kingma, Engineering faculty.
I would like to make a motion to approve the tenure of Jeremy Kingma.
Who would second that?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Jeremy.
Jamison Lee, English faculty.
I would make a motion to approve tenure for Jamison Lee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations.
Ashley Lockman, Communication faculty.
I would like to make a motion to approve the tenure of Ashley Lockman.
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ashley.
David Thompson, Physics faculty.
I would make a motion to approve tenure for David Thompson.
And I would second motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, David.
Congratulations to all of you.
This is wonderful. Let's give him a big... And Dr. Burns and Dr. McLennan, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we would like all of our candidates to know how special tenure is. We know how hard you've worked to be recognized in this way, and it certainly is advantageous to our students and our entire institution. So we want to celebrate with you, and I won't shake your hands or get near you, but we do have some refreshments planned, so at this time we'll take a short recess and celebrate tenure.
By the way, she's just toxic tonight. It's not that she's unfriendly.
Not like usual.
And on behalf of the faculty, we thank you very much for your consideration of these candidates for tenure.
Thank you. I know.
I feel like I'm gluttonous, I'm gonna kinda staff it back.
I'm good.
It doesn't look like so many.
We're gonna resume our meeting if you would join us, thank you. That was a great celebration, again, congratulations to all the tenure candidates for all of your hard work and always great to see that much of an effort put forth.
Where'd everybody go?
Everybody, they're still, they're still celebrating. We need to do a review of the minutes. Board, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if so, if there are any changes? If not, we'll accept the minutes as written. Alright, we'll accept the minutes. No one has signed up for public comment, so our next agenda item is "Celebrating Success" by Phi Theta Kappa Chapter, Grayden Stanley.
Good evening Chair Wood, Trustees, President McLennan, colleagues, friends, and guests here tonight. It is absolutely my pleasure to be able to introduce to you tonight's celebration of success year. Phi Theta Kappa, I think most of you know, is our International Honor Society for Community Colleges, and we've had a chapter here for probably as long as the institution has existed. But just recently, they've done some amazing things, and it's such an honor to be able to introduce them tonight. Before we introduce the students who will be presenting most of the program, I want to introduce to you two advisors. Some of you recall Heather Erickson, who was the, was serving as our Director of Student Life and Leadership. Heather left in December. Heather was also serving as the advisor to Phi Theta Kappa at the time. So we were searching high and low and found two incredible folks here at the college to take over in that role. And I want to introduce and recognize them. Audrey Cameron, who's an English instructor here. Audrey, and yes, you have to stand up, thank you. And Marita DeBoer, and we'll do all the applause together. Thank you. Marita is a student success advisor, works in our advising center here as well. And we went to them and asked them if they would be willing to help with Phi Theta Kappa, and they've done just truly an extraordinary job. I don't know that either really had experience with Phi Theta Kappa, and both of them jumped in and the learning curve was fast. Attending some conferences, getting online, and learning about those responsibilities. Just recently, I had an opportunity to travel with Paige, who you'll meet here in a second. And we were talking about the advisors, and the students themselves would tell you that it has been incredible, the amount of support and the quality of the support that they've received from Audrey and Marita. So thank you both so much for what you've done in supporting our Phi Theta Kappa organization. I'm certain that the students will tell you about some of their accomplishments, but probably not to the degree that they deserve the recognition. So I'm gonna jump ahead on this just, just a little bit. A little part of that is we, chapters are ranked as a one star through five star. Most recently, we had been a one star, we'd been a two star a couple different times that way. And we certainly aspire, the president has a strong background associated. He is in fact a Phi Theta Kappa member as well, and has been associated with Phi Theta Kappa and was a great supporter of the organization here. We aspired for them to be a five star chapter, but it doesn't matter what, what we want for them if they don't want it. And I would certainly tell you this year, they've gone to great lengths to achieve and move from a one star to a five star chapter in one year. They were recognized in this year as a five star chapter, and they will likely tell you a little bit more about that. There's an honors project that I put in front of you tonight that they'll talk a little bit more about that. I really wanted you to have a copy and be able to take that home and read through it because it's extraordinary work. And so you really need to read through that to appreciate its quality. And there's a college project that you're going to hear about as well that was truly exceptional. The president, myself, and Lita and others had a chance to meet with the leadership team several times this, several times this year. They are truly an extraordinary group, as many students as we've worked with through the years, and there have been outstanding ones, I think these probably rival all the very best. Their president is Paige Zeller. Paige will be up here and will introduce the other students to you as well. But they have truly been extraordinary in representing North Idaho College as our Phi Theta Kappa organization. And I can't remember the other part of the chapter name. Delta Kappa of Phi Theta Kappa, there you go. Would you please join me in recognizing and welcoming, welcoming our students from Phi Theta Kappa?
We just wanted to start by thanking the board for letting us come and share with you some of our projects and accomplishments this past year. And we'll go ahead and begin with some introductions. As Grayden said, my name is Paige Zeller. I am the current chapter president for our Delta Kappa Chapter of Phi Theta Kappa. I'm gonna introduce one of our Vice Presidents of Service. Her name is Carol DiMartini. She could not be here tonight, but she's one of our great officers and she's an amazing addition to our team. So I'll turn the time over to these officers and let them introduce themselves.
Hello, my name's Cameron Peck, and I'm the Vice President of Fellowship and Membership.
My name is Nicholas Kleinhurst, I'm the Vice President of Leadership for Phi Theta Kappa.
Alright, we're gonna begin and talk to you a little bit about what Phi Theta Kappa is, just so you guys have a little bit of an idea of more of the nationwide and worldwide statistics, and then some of statistics from North Idaho College. So I'll turn the time over to Cameron, and he'll let you know about some of PTK's happenings, and we'll go from there.
So with Phi Theta Kappa, their background is, they were founded in 1918. They nearly have three million members inducted since the founding. They have about 1,285 chapters worldwide. And currently in NIC, we have about 434 members. And I just wanted to talk about this past year with rigorous teamwork. We were able to develop, as Grayden said, from a one star status to the prestigious five star status of our chapter. And we wanted to talk more about our projects and how we are able to attain this five star status. So we'll talk about the Honors in Action Project first, which I'll turn to Nick Los.
Thank you for having us, Board. I just wanted to say that we are all very excited to be here and present this project to you. I had the privilege of leading the Honors in Action Project this year, and I had a great team to work with. For those of you who aren't aware of the Honors in Action Project, the Honors in Action Project is a staple of the mission for Phi Theta Kappa. Its role in the organization is to empower students to utilize research and action to make an impact against an international issue as it manifests in the chapter's local community. And the point of this is to help foster leadership, scholarship, and career development in students participating in this particular activity. So it is very important for on-campus projects and events. The inspiration behind our project this year was actually at an international conference trip attended by Paige Zeller and myself. When we were in the park outside of the convention center, I noticed a man who was unconscious. I ran over to assist him. He quickly regained consciousness, and we had the opportunity to speak with him and determine what was wrong and what happened. After speaking with him, we learned that he was a retired Navy veteran who struggled with brain cancer and was homeless. And this bothered our chapter, especially as we were thinking about all that we learned at the conference, and we were traveling back to the college and were wondering how we can make an impact against this issue. And this led to a two-month research campaign, investigating the problems within the VA system and the problems that veterans face in our community. And we found that there are three key reasons why veterans have difficulty accessing services within our system. The first being rural locale, next being a lack of confidence in the system, and little knowledge about how the system is supposed to be operating. Some of our most interesting findings were that veterans can spend as much as 122 days waiting for a doctor's appointment at a VA facility. And 25% of Idaho veterans live in healthcare professional shortage areas, making it very difficult for them to access their benefits. And it is our chapter's determination through this project and through our research that connections with private services and organizations can provide services or guide veterans through the process of obtaining them more efficiently. To do this, we partnered with the North Idaho Veteran Stand Down, North Idaho College Veteran Services, and Salvation Army Croc Center to be able to host a Veterans Day luncheon. And at this particular luncheon, we had representatives from the Stand Down come and speak with the veterans, and talk to them not only to learn about what they're struggling with and the programs that they may have difficulty accessing, but also speak to some of the work that they do for the Veteran Stand Down. For those of you who don't know about the Stand Down, it is a terrific organization that offers a lot of opportunity. And they're actually going to host an event right here at the college on May 11th. And Phi Theta Kappa will proudly support their program on that day. And at the luncheon, we also had a table out in front of the event where the veterans were able to further access materials and resources that we can directly connect them to those resources that they need. In all, we helped more than 60 veterans at this particular event, and that number is expected to be even greater when one considers the social connections that they have in their own peer groups, and how they are reaching out to people that they know who can access these services as well. I just want to say that the relationships that we formed between the college, the North Idaho Veteran Stand Down, and the Salvation Army Croc Center are some of the most invaluable relationships that we could have formed through this project. And so though this, this project was very successful, our next project we did was just as successful on a local, regional, and international level, and that will be our college project. I'll turn that over to Paige.
Thank you, Los. Alright, so our college project, the college project itself is a requirement from Phi Theta Kappa along with the Honors in Action Project. So this project is intended to aid the college in any of its needs, as well as encourage the college's mission. So this year, we were able to sit down with Grayden Stanley and discuss some different potential topics. And we came in with some topics, and Grayden kindly sat there and listened to our topics, and we had some really good, good things going for us. But he said, you know, I'm really passionate about this need not only on our campus, but in our, in our community as well. And that need is suicide prevention and awareness. So we decided to focus on that topic. And from there, we sat down with Tim Gerlitz and discussed different ways that we could bring this project to our campus. So we discussed, okay, well, should we put some posters up? Should we hold an event? Just trying to find the best way to conduct a project that would be the most beneficial to our students. So Tim introduced us to the idea of a QPR training. QPR stands for Question, Persuade, and Refer. This training offers tangible skills that people can take from the training and use if they're ever in a situation where they are trying to help someone who is contemplating suicide. So as officers, we were fans of that because we wanted a tangible skill that students could take out the door with them and apply in their lives if they ever needed to help someone who was in need. So after our meeting with him, we sat down with Dr. McLennan and discussed our project idea with him, and he was extremely supportive. And he showed his support and gave us access to resources that we needed to complete this project. So from there, we teamed up with SPAN of Idaho. SPAN stands for the Suicide Prevention Action Network for Idaho. And they put us in touch with the right people, and we met with a volunteer. Her name is Carlana Kugel. She works for Cutney Health, but she is a SPAN volunteer. And she volunteered her time and was supportive and wanted to come to NIC and provide this training for us for no fee. So we're so appreciative that she was willing to do that, and that SPAN was so supportive of our, of our project goal. So the summit included statistics about suicide in our community, as well as free question, persuade, and refer training. So I will, we took some pictures. The event was an overall success. We had 25 attendees, and some of them being community members, which is a little bit surprising to us because we did not specifically advertise to community members. We later found out that our project won first place for the Greater Northwest Region, which is our region for Phi Theta Kappa. And we, after that, when Los and I had the opportunity to attend the National Catalyst in Orlando, Florida, found out that it won Distinguished College Project Award at the Hallmark Awards Gala. So even though we have checked off our requirement for our college project, we're really passionate about this topic. And we decided to hold a second suicide prevention summit training for students. It will be held tomorrow night, actually, at 5:00 PM in the Meyer Health Science Building, and we have been advertising to the community for that one as well. So everyone is welcome. We're really excited about it, and we're hoping for a great turnout. Moving on, I know we're running a little bit short on time, so I wanted to keep it brief with some of our other campus activities. So very quickly, the only fundraising that we do is our Art on the Green fundraiser. So at Art on the Green, we hand out water bottles for donation. So that was this past summer. We also, as PTK leaders, try to, we're trying to make it more of a regular thing where we serve as student leaders for the day of service. We did so last semester, and the day of service is this Saturday, so we'll be doing that again. We also presented at the Northwest Undergraduate Conference in Humanities. And that presentation was geared toward Los's development of our research project and the research process, process itself, and how to collaborate as a team and focus your goals to, to do this great research project. So we presented there, and as a result of that presentation, we are currently in the process of developing a new INTR research-based course. So that is exciting as well. There you will see our Art on the Green booth, as well as some of our officers at the day of service this past semester. So like I said, our, the next Art on the Green will be on Saturday, so we're planning to attend that as well. Lastly, we wanted to thank the Board of Trustees again for the opportunity to share our success, and also for the continuous support that we receive through them and our college administration. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have. So thank you again for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, great presentation. Board, comments? Trustee Murray?
Not, not so much a question, just your groups to be commended. In a couple of situations, you've come into an unfortunate situation. You identified it, of course, but what you did was you took, made an opportunity out of it, and you took action. And that's the difference. A lot of people can see the problem, but you took action and then you carried on further. So thank you so much for being great representatives. Thank you.
Trustee Howard?
These meetings are televised, and I would like the public to get to know you folks a little bit better. And could somebody explain how someone gets into Phi Beta Kappa? What the ground rules are, what the foundational qualifications are? So that the public will understand better, I think, what it took to get here.
Well, the initial joining of Phi Theta Kappa is actually governed by the International Ruling Committee. And they've determined that minimum GPA must be 3.5, and it has to be maintained to get into the Honor Society. Now, that includes full-time college students, part-time college students, and dual-enrolled college students. But you do have to complete at least 12 credits to get into the Honor Society. Many students will actually get into the Honor Society after their first semester at North Idaho College, which is a great opportunity because the Honor Society will be able to, at that point, provide resources such as scholarships, career development resources, like our Five Star Competitive Edge Program, which is an online career development program, as well as get them engaged with the on-campus activities and the projects that we're working on. And as long as students maintain a 3.25 GPA for the remainder of their time here at North Idaho College, they will graduate with honors. And they'll continue to see benefits as they transfer from North Idaho College. There are major transfer programs within the Honor Society. And this year in particular, when we attended the International Conference, they really were emphasizing encouraging student transfer and encouraging them to be able to move on to that next step. And even beyond North Idaho College, they'll see benefits through scholarships and career development continue as they are progressing through their undergraduate and graduate degrees.
Thank you.
Trustee Banducci?
I have a question and a comment. I'd like to start with the question first. Is there a cost to being in this? Do you bear it? Do we bear it? Do we share it with you? Do we cover it for you? I'm just curious.
So there is a cost associated with joining. It is a one-time lifetime membership fee of $70. Now, if a student cannot afford the one-time lifetime membership fee, there is a scholarship called the Golden Opportunity Scholarship. And our advisors nominate students who apply for such scholarship to the Honor Society, and they will give membership for free for those students. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's a good, good. So we sent it from here to the international organization, and they have the, okay.
Yes, sir.
The second is a comment. I'm gonna brag on Paige for just a second. She was one of our two representatives that we were with in Boise that was acknowledged for her academic excellence and photoed with the Lieutenant Governor. And Grayden was down there with me. We had one of the counselor, I don't know, were we supposed to call you counselor? Anyway, but what's that? Advisor, excuse me, advisor. But anyway, I just want to point that out because Paige, the two young ladies that were our representatives just exemplified, well, they exemplified NIC very well, and represented themselves well in the college. So it was a real treat to be there. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and point out Paige, so, for Paige.
Grayden, you had a comment?
If I may please, Chair Wood and Trustees and President McLennan, it's an all USA academic team. We get to choose two of those, and so Paige went along with another one of our students who was selected to that award. And are you going to announce about the other part? Great, I would like to defer to the president for the other great things about Paige Zeller as well.
Perfect. President McLennan.
Is it hard to be so impressive, Paige?
I had some comments in my report that I'll, I'll make it that time.
Okay. Well, I would just, oh, trust me. No. Page before beauty.
What? Actually, I, it was, I had a question about, somebody had mentioned there were 434 members at NIC. And is that presently, or is that over a period of time, but presently enrolled? There's 434 members?
Yeah, so there's a three-symester grace period. Oftentimes, we see with community colleges that someone will enroll, and they might not graduate, but maybe take a break. So there are, there's a three-symester grace period, so some of them are active right now, and then they're, they're... and then there, some of them are three semesters out. So, yes, it's basically current with that three-symester grace period, yeah.
The reason I asked is that's a, that's a pretty significant number, and I suspect in order to become a Phi Beta Kappa, you really get pretty motivated people. So, do you get pretty good participation in these projects that you've described for us?
Yes. So, that's been one of our struggles this year. We came in with the goal to get to a five-star chapter, and that takes a lot of work, and we found it to be extremely difficult reaching out to our members for volunteers. We find that when an Honor Society offers scholarships and all of these benefits, that is what motivates people to join. Once they get that membership, it's extremely hard to motivate them to be involved. So, it has been one of our goals for this next year and for our future officer team is to really strive for that involvement and to get our members excited about our projects and motivated to volunteer. We have tried some different tactics. We're trying emails, we're trying announcements through Cardinal Sync. We bounced around the idea of doing text messages, we're doing posters. So, member and student engagement is one of our goals that we're working on right now. We did struggle with that this past year, though.
But that's what leadership is all about, right? Thank you.
Certainly. Dr. McLennan?
So, this, this group's been amazing. I've been associated with Phi Theta Kappa for 30 years or so, and I've seen some really good groups come along. The, the leadership of this group is, is the best I've ever seen, to go from a one-star to a five-star, the research projects, the action project and all that. And I, I did, I did talk to you at the beginning of the year that it's usually just a small group of people that, in my experience, have made all of the difference for an organization like this. I appreciate so much that you, you've taken that to heart, and you actually saw it through for the whole year, and you're not done yet, and that's amazing. So, you know, we always talk about succession here at the college, and how do we, you know, how do we, how do we take that to the next, to the next group? And how do you feel about next year's group of leaders coming in, and how are you working to transition the good work that you've done forward? I mean, that may be part of the challenge that you're facing right now, so.
Yeah, so with the timeline, we're really trying to jump on that right now. Over the course of the semester, because we came in as new officers and were at a one-star rating, we didn't really know much of how to do anything within PTK. We didn't really know what the correct steps were to take or what resources we needed to reach out to in order to be successful. And so, one of the things that we really wanted to implement this year for our incoming officers is a current binder of all the steps that we took for all of our projects and all the resources that we used, the fundraising, just kind of a how you do. And so, we are working on that right now. We, our, our due date for that is actually on the first. So, we have divided up all these different sections about, just from general maintenance of the chapter all the way to our projects and following through with them. So, we are working on a binder for them. We are also reaching out through our advising team to members who have recently joined that might know our advisors or know faculty members, and we're reaching out to them personally for, to see if they'd be interested in officer positions, and we have a couple of people interested right now. So, we've had some attendees in our recent chapter meetings, and so, we're getting there.
Thank you.
Well, your parents must be so proud, really, truly. You know, I'm a veteran, many of us are, so I, the project that you picked and the action that Trustee Murray spoke about, the action you took is just incredible. And I love it that you're doing a stand-down here. I always wondered if we would do a stand, maybe we have done one on campus before.
This will be the first year.
Be the first one? It seems like the perfect location for it. So, congratulations to you for that. That's May 11th. What time does it start?
I believe we would be there at 8:00 in the morning to do setup, and I believe the event would also start at the same time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for a great presentation.
Due.
Did you, did you have more?
One day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Takes us to our constituent reports. Asnec, Peter Soderberg. Peter, is this your last report?
This is my last report. So, Madam Chair, trustees, Dr. McLennan, and guests, always an honor speaking. This, as you said, this is my last report, so I'll treasure it as I go on about what Asnec has been up to this month. We started off this semester, I mean, this last month, with really promoting elections to, for the upcoming officers, and I want to introduce our next Asnec president, Paul McLeod. He'll be serving as the next Asnec president for next year. So, we also were able to get Vice President and seven other senators to be a part of. So, we have one position unfilled, which we will be filling next semester at the beginning of fall.
Congratulations, Paul. You have big shoes to fill.
2019, yes. And then, I said 2020, I meant 2019. So, we also celebrated Earth Day here on campus. We had, two senators really took that on and put, made a big banner, and then went downstairs and had Hydro Flask, which are reusable water bottles, and had students write down on this big poster board about how they will be more eco-friendly this month. So, and then we hung that up in the sub, so it was a cool way to connect with a lot of students. We got a lot of participation in that, so that was really awesome. We also participated in the GAD event, which Josh Grant, a senator, took on, and he did a fantastic job of representing NIC. The GAD event was a huge success, raising awareness about accessibility with technology and just accessibility around campus. So, it was a really awesome event that took part, and we were, Asnec was happy to be a part of it. And then the last thing was, Asnec was disappointed, the College Senate voted on to, to not have a tobacco-free campus here, to not have that policy passed. That was something that Asnec was really pushing for, and that we really, we were, we supported it. So, that was a disappointment, but we'll continue on the next semester. Hopefully, next student leaders will also see that as a valuable, important issue and take that to the next level. But that sums up my last report. It was a quick one.
Well, Peter, I'm sure the board has questions, but you need to tell us where you go from here.
I am going to Boise State, so I'll be going down to Boise, actually here, pretty soon, and then starting the fall at Boise State in the, in the Kobe program.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
We're so proud of you. Board, any questions for Peter?
No, but congratulations, not on your selection of, of schools, but on your career. I know you're getting into business, is that right?
Yeah, business, finance.
Good for you. You'll be a success.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Peter. Great report. Okay, Staff Assembly, Kathy Sparks.
Good evening, trustees and President McLennan. So, at our last Staff Assembly meeting, mostly what we discussed was policies and procedures. We reviewed the professional development policy and procedure and the copyright policy and procedure. We also, over the last month, had nominations for staff appreciation awards, and so those will be given at the commencement breakfast. And we also have had nominations for a new Vice Chair and Secretary and some new Senators, and we'll be voting on that in the next week. And that's it.
Okay, great. Board, any questions for Kathy?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the Assembly, Joe Jacoby.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues, guests, thanks for this opportunity to share what we've been doing. I wanted to thank you again for the conferral of tenure. We are really excited. Every year, we are fortunate to get a great crop of dedicated educators, and this year is no different. So, thank you for your recognition of that, and what a great thing to get to see outstanding students as well. It's just a reminder that colleges don't just graduate workers, they graduate citizens who add something to the community, and those students are an outstanding example of that. So, we, at Faculty Assembly, did a lot of discussing about policy and procedures as well. We had discussed the tobacco-free policy and the property, the intellectual property policy and procedure, and Diana Renz brought the idea of combining staff and faculty professional development policy, so we discussed that. And we took nominations for new Executive Committee officers, so next meeting, I'm going to be bringing Chris Pellchat along to introduce. He'll, looks like he's going to be the Faculty Chair, and Brian Hanaford will continue to be Vice Chair, and then we'll have a new Secretary and Senators. Did you have any questions for us?
Joe, how many times in your career here at NIC have you been Faculty Assembly Chair?
Actually, this is the only time I've been Vice Chair, and then I was Senate Chair.
But you, for some reason, I think of you always giving a report, and now you're not going to anymore.
They just don't lock the doors, and I sneak in.
Okay, that works. It's been great. You've been great in the role.
Does that mean it just feels like it's, it's been longer and really kind of drudgery? It's like, oh my God, I can't believe.
Of course not. Board, any questions for Joe?
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Okay. And our Senate, Jessica Adams.
Chair Wood, trustees, colleagues, friends, and guests, this is my last meeting with you guys before I return to my original seat right next to Jeff back there, where you guys saw me for years before. So, Senate last met just last Thursday, not very long ago. As Peter stated, we did review, we had a second reading of the tobacco policy. We didn't end up approving it, and we have sent it back to committee. There were concerns from staff and a lot of concerns that came from faculty in regarding prohibiting students from smoking on campus and not outlining where students would be able to smoke and the areas that they would be allowed to smoke that could create smoking in our community and by the neighborhoods where a lot of our community. And so, there was concerns with that. There was also the concerns on how we enforce that. And so, based on those concerns, we did not approve it for a second reading, and we sent it back to committee for them to review. And I also recommended that they add staff and faculty on that committee so that they can work on some revisions and bring it back next year for the Senate approval. We also had a second reading of Policy and Procedure 2.0104, which is proposed revisions to the policy on the initiation, revision, and review of policy and procedure. This is the policy, I really like this policy, because this is the policy that there is an ad hoc committee from Senate that was formed to add that review schedule. But we also did a lot of revisions, which hopefully it'll be before you guys next month. Did a lot of revisions on the policy and procedure to outline how the campus is involved in that review and revision of policy and procedure, not just House, Senate, the President, and the Board of Trustees, because really, it's a campus-wide effort when it goes to revising policies and procedure, and then they're proposed for approval to Senate, the President, and the Board. So, that was really worked on, that clarification. So, that was approved for a second reading, both that policy and the procedure. We also approved our Standing Committee charge related to the Review Committee that would be working on, like navigating through the review schedule. And so, we passed that with one caveat, is that in FY '20, with all of the policies and procedures that need to be revised for accreditation, there's roughly 20 of them. So, Senate wanted to make sure that this review schedule, instead of adding, and it's just 13 policies and procedures to review to the 20, that this review committee would first be teaming up with Accreditation Executive Committee to work on, working with them to help the process of getting those 20 through in time through the whole process for the accreditation visit next April. And then in FY '21, that that review schedule would start year one on that review schedule based on the Procedure 2.0104. We also had, it was a busy meeting, a first reading for the policies and procedures on the copyright and the intellectual property. So, those will be reviewed for second readings next month. Next month, we're very excited. First item in the business are officer elections. So, we will be electing our new officers, which is unique Staff Assembly and Faculty Assembly. They elect through their assemblies their officers and then also senators. Their senators come together, and as College Senate, we elect within ourselves our officers. So, we'll be doing those elections at our meeting, and it's the first item of business. And once there's a new chair, I get to pass it off to the new chair. I did let him know that if he's not going to be able to make it to the Board meeting next month, that I will be here, so I can stand in, but not to use that as a crutch. And that is my report. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, board, any questions of Jessica?
No.
It's been a pleasure working with you, and I'm happy we'll still see you in the audience.
And if you have any questions about the Policy and Procedure 2.0104 next month, I'll be right back there.
Perfect. Thank you. We're going to do the President's Report. I'm going to excuse myself for just a second. If you're, if you're done before I get back, Trustee Howard will happily go down the agenda for me. So, President's Report.
Great. Well, thank you. I just want to add my appreciation for the constituent group members and the service that you provided the college this year. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. I know that the new group will, in our meeting today, I got the sense that maybe the expectations aren't always as clearly defined as you might like them to be as you go into these positions, and through the course of your experience this year, you've certainly come to see how that all works. But you've done a terrific, terrific job, and, and I wish you best. Peter, you've done just a wonderful job. You've been a great representative for the students this year, and I think you've, you've set the bar again, even just a little bit higher for the new group coming in. Paul, congratulations on your election. I think there's a good framework to step into. You've been a part of that this year already, and, and I know you're going to do great, great things as well. So, look forward to, to that, and Peter, all the best to you as you move on to that next chapter in your life. You chased our group out of here, Grayden. I didn't intend to, but there was food in. Okay, well, I just wanted to, well, there's things I want to report. Grayden and I actually, well, let me back up a little bit. We, there's a national organization called Campus Compact, and Campus Compact, and I'll tell you what they are about, breaks up into regional and/or state organizations. Idaho does not have representation in the Campus Compact organization. Let me just say, Washington Campus, Campus Compact, we've affiliated with the Washington chapter of Campus Compact, and let me read you what their mission statement is. Washington Campus Compact, hosted at Western Washington University, is a coalition of higher education institutions committed to advancing the public purpose of colleges and universities, educating students for civic and social responsibility, and working in partnership to cultivate vital and sustainable communities. And I reached out to the Director of Washington Campus Compact, having been a member of that organization before, and most recently came from a regional model, the Maryland-DC Delaware Campus Compact Organization, and asked them if they would allow us to be affiliated with them. So, they're now loosely defined as the Washington, maybe a few smaller letters, Idaho Campus Compact, but, but we got our foot in the door, and, and I think you'll see other Idaho colleges come in to that. But the reason I bring that up here is, on Friday, Grayden and I, along with two of our students, Peter and Paige, who you heard from this evening, were recognized as Students Serving Idaho Awards, and it's, it's out, it's recognizing the outstanding students from each of the member colleges, two students for their outstanding services to their institutions and their communities in the spirit of the in the spirit of the mission of Campus Compact. So it was, because they're known as the Washington Campus Compact and none of their, I'll pass this around, by the way. Ken, if you want to. That's the program for the event. As the people emceeing and speaking at the event, talked about the event, they were very careful and consistent in calling themselves the Washington Idaho Campus Compact Organization. So congratulations, Peter, and it was a really nice event. And NIC was very well represented with our two students. I attended the National American Association of Community College Conference last week and it was a terrific conference, lots of good sessions. Always come back with a lot of ideas that I think sometimes scares my executive team. But nonetheless, it was, it was well worth it. I just want to also report that as a National Association of Community College Entrepreneurship Board Member, that board meeting is held at the conference. And then in conjunction with that meeting, I was asked to join the newly formed Task Force on Community College Apprenticeship. That task force is going to identify, validate, and promote highly successful apprenticeship models and work-based training programs. And this is a national task force made up 55 member institutions are represented. I believe I'm the only one in Idaho that's a part of that. But what may come out of that is we have the potential to serve as incubators for testing models and new programs and gauging metrics around apprenticeships. So more to follow on that. Tonight, we're going to be presenting for the first reading the budget and Chris and Sarah will present that to you and answer questions. But I just want to say that before we get into that conversation, from a process and from our principles that we set out in terms of developing the budget, I couldn't be more pleased with the widespread campus participation in this budget, the engagement from the campus community, and the, just the true diligent, mission-focused work that all of the cost center budget managers did in helping us create the budget that you're going to be presented with tonight. I especially want to give a deep appreciation to Chris Martin and Sarah Garcia for that work. We will be hosting the state board meeting in June. And just want to let you know that, I think you may already know that, but it's, we're on the agenda every two years to host a meeting. We're currently in the process of setting up the schedule, activities, and events and we'll be presenting that to the board so that you'll know exactly where your involvement can come in for that. And then lastly, and briefly, I may be putting him on the spot because I was trying to get word to him while I was up here. But I'd like to just, I announced last board meeting about the Global Accessibility Awareness Day Conference that was being hosted for the first time at NIC yesterday. And I just want Ken to give you a very quick update on how that day went. It was phenomenal.
Welcome, Ken.
Thank you, Chairwood, President McLennan, members of the board. We did our first ever pave the way to Global Accessibility Awareness Day yesterday. We had great participation. One of the tricky things about it was not a lot of people really knew what it was going to be. But the people that came in and then were exposed to the different services and offerings that our community and NIC gives to people with accessibility needs was incredible. If you go to our event page at www.nic.edu/A11Y, you can go to the event page and then go to the YouTube, which the stream was still up. So if you want to listen to me for about three and a half hours plus another hour presentation, we livestreamed an interview, all the interviews of all the different booths to get the awareness out there. We were also blessed. Global Accessibility Awareness Day was created eight years ago by two individuals, Janison Ascension and Joe Devon, who also both flew here to be part of our event. So they started this global movement to try to have developers create accessibility in technology and they actually came to NIC. And they actually did a keynote speech for us as well, which was just incredible for us in our first effort to try to do this. So I think what we'll do is probably do a celebrating success coming up so I can really bring Jeremy Seda, who is really key to this, and some of my team members to really go through this and give recognition where it's deserved best. So it was, it was phenomenal.
That's great.
So just to cap that off, you know, we did receive line item funding a couple of years ago, nearly $500,000 to begin with. It created the position, Jeremy, and then also created the resources for us to really infuse cutting-edge accessibility technology into everything we're doing at North Idaho College. And I think Jeremy's goal in life is world domination in the accessibility market and he's well on his way. So that will be a great celebrating success. I think you'll find it very interesting.
If I may, my charge to Jeremy was to become a nationally-known accessibility program in a community college. And he ended up actually presenting in Beirut, Lebanon, at the European ABEL Summit. So he kind of went international before he went national on me. So he's doing great.
At their invitation.
At their invitation, yes.
That's awesome. Trustee Vanducci.
Well, I guess, I don't know if this is going to be a humorous anecdote or not, but speaking of our technology leap, some of us suddenly found ourselves very challenged to access our emails. Last count, I think I had about 150 stacked up and I couldn't get into it and I couldn't figure out how to get there. The good part of that is since I was in the building, just around the corner from the IT Help Desk today, I dropped in and your boys, your men, your gentlemen, your employees, took great care of me to get me my fob, which tomorrow I'm going to finally get to try out to see if I can access my emails. So, yes, I like technology. It's just hard when you get left behind.
But your email is highly secure.
Yes, sir. It is. Anyway, but thank you for them taking care of me today and getting me squared away. They were real great about that.
Chairwood, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Our Meyer Health Science Building Expansion update, Chris Martin.
Chairwood, members of the board, on behalf of trustee Dunlap, I'm stepping in tonight to give a small update on the Meyer Health Science Expansion. This is moving along great. And our faculty from health professions and nursing and natural sciences will be meeting with the architecture team next Monday and Tuesday to develop the programming for this facility. And so it's moving along really, really well. The plan is for the programming to occur next Monday and Tuesday and then also for us to hopefully catch faculty before they're off contract to make sure we heard correctly the programming. And then ALSC will do work over the summer to develop the schematics. And our hope is to bring that back to faculty that'll be involved in that space in August when they return, as well as present to the board where we're at with the planning for that facility. We're working really hard to have a bid date of February to catch the bid climate appropriate. And then we would begin construction of this next summer.
Okay. Board, any questions? Trustee Vanducci.
Chris, if we hope to go out to bid RFQ, RFP, whatever, February, begin construction early summer, May-June timeframe, how long do we think that construction process will take?
We have a plan for a year.
Okay.
So we would be, we would have it finished for the following fall semester.
So fall of 2020?
No, 2021.
I mean, excuse me, 2021, yeah, 2020, 2021, okay. I lost, I ran out of fingers.
Board, do you have any other questions on this? Chris, since you're up there, can I just ask about the opening date of the joint use?
Absolutely may. Excuse me. The substantial completion for that will be the end of May. And so that's, that's the substantial completion. We've got Ken's team lined up from that day forward for all the technology needs in that building. But the planned opening for that building will be this upcoming fall semester. And we don't have an exact date, but it will be in the month of August prior to the start of classes.
And we'll do a celebration?
We will do a celebration.
With our partners?
Absolutely.
It's in process. Fantastic.
Ceremonial ribbon.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. That takes us to our K-Tech report. Trustee Vanducci.
K-Tech is an exciting place. A lot going on. First, I'm going to throw this out there. We got a real nice shout-out today for our NIC instructors and just the involvement and the collaboration with the folks there and even the mentoring. I came up today about the mix of instructors, of different age and experience and things like that. And they talked about how, you know, within the staff, you know, that dynamic of mentoring each other and sharing and just all this stuff. And they specifically talked about our, you know, our people being involved. And Cal DeHaas got a shout-out in particular, just with what he's doing there. So that was, that's just always so reaffirming of the partnership. Enrollment is going off the chart. They've hit, they've hit the goal already. They're at 403 students for next semester. They're getting maxed out.
Todd, what's their favorite program? What's the most popular?
Everything's full right now, but I have, I do, I have an answer for that.
Okay.
Okay, maybe I'll go to that right now. Health Sciences right now, the CNA program, they have a waiting list of 25, which is a full session. So the conversation today was, where would we put them? And where do we find an instructor? So there's a lot of thoughts going there. And there's actually a couple of other dynamic things that would be premature for me to share, but a couple more things. Oh, and HVAC program is on and will go on this fall. So with the time, it has, where it needs to be. They just had the K-Tech, the Skills USA competition and the results were tremendous. K-Tech scored first and second in construction in the Skills USA results, first in collision, first in welding fabrication, second in welding solo, first in precision machining, and third in computer repair. That is a tremendous representation for the school. Let's see. That might be good enough for right now. The next meeting out there is on the 26th of June. Get some more information at that time, but very exciting. And like I say, they're, they're already starting to think about things like expansion, you know, talking about.
Very cool.
It's exciting and maybe look at some of the younger kids and some different things, so, yeah.
Good. All right. Thank you. Board, any questions of trustee Vanducci? That takes us on to our old business tab one, our second reading of action item, Student Complaints Policy. Dr. Burns.
Chairwood, members of the board. I present to you the, for a second reading, the Student Complaints and Concerns Policy. You reviewed it last month. I believe we were offered one minor change, which is reflected in the policy for this evening. And so I just stand for questions if you have any questions before you consider it.
Thank you. Board, any questions for Dr. Burns? On the second reading. Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Just, I do have a question real quick.
Trustee Vanducci.
I did not look closely enough. I apologize. From first reading to second reading, were there any changes?
We inserted, Chairwood, trustee Vanducci, we inserted the word "shall" after the word "policy" in the first sentence.
At the top, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the policy?
I'd make a motion to approve the policy for student complaints and concerns.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your hard work on this. All right, we will go on to tab three, our feasibility study for Christianson Gymnasium Expansion. Chris Martin. This is an action item.
Chairwood, members of the board, this request is to allow the administration to contract with an architectural engineering firm to do a full study of the feasibility of expanding Christianson Gymnasium. As part of the ongoing review of facilities here at NIC, this has given us an opportunity, thank you so much. This has given us an opportunity to look at other options for addressing the needs for a athletic facility and field house. And so during our April 10th board meeting, one next step that was proposed was a feasibility study for Christianson.
Great. Board, this topic's familiar to us. We discussed it during our workshop. Thought that it might be a good idea to look at all of our options, be responsible with this. Any comments or questions for Chris, trustee Murray?
Real quick, I think you've told me, but Chris, who do you, what architectural firm are you planning to do the looks, look at this on?
Chairwood, trustee Murray, we would actually take this out for an RFQ, given the scope for this project.
Chairwood?
He was just, I'll get right to it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
My recollection may be faulty here, but I thought we were talking about an amount not to exceed $75,000. But we've got $85,000 on here. And I know that was a number that was kind of picked from a prior study or something that was done. Was it 75 or 85?
Chairwood, trustee Howard, I believe we had written down 75 to 85. So we're perhaps both right. But we're happy to choose the, at this point, the not to exceed. I believe we're fine with an either number.
Not to exceed $75,000? Okay. Another question if I might?
Yes.
And this is semantics, certainly, but when we entitle it Authorized Feasibility Study for Christianson Gymnasium Expansion, that almost sounds like a proactive thing. We're going to expand Christianson Gymnasium. And my understanding was that we were going to look at the suitability of modifying Christianson Gymnasium for long-term future use. And I would prefer to have the project titled something like that so that it doesn't presume that we're doing a study to expand Christianson Gymnasium. That really, it's, we're looking for the suitability of Christianson Gymnasium long-term use.
Christianson Gymnasium Revitalization.
No, I know, again, that's assumed something. This is a potential alternative and we want to examine the cost of it and whether or not it can be done.
So trustee Howard, it's on, on tab three, it says Authorized Feasibility Study for Christianson.
Into.
Yeah, well, or for the suitability of Christianson Gymnasium for long-term future usage.
There you go.
Okay. And I understand what you're getting at. That was the intention of the board, to determine if it's something that's even feasible. And trustee Vanducci, you had a question?
As we, as we look at this, we talked about possibly being able to piggyback on some of the prior work that's been done, the prior study. Do we still think that's feasible? Do we still have that available for, as part of the RFQ or something, to say, hey, we've done this? And I don't recall the architectural firm we used for that. Do you by chance, the last one? If you don't, that's okay.
Chairwood, trustee Vanducci, I'm going to, I'm going to refer to a grading, but I believe ALSC did the feasibility study on locations that the Student Rec Center could be placed on. As part of that, they did look at what options Christianson Gymnasium would provide as a student wellness and recreation center.
Was that also the one that, when we talked about like the road between Christianson Gym and here, where if we expanded the footprint or went forward, was that, were they the ones that looked at that? Is that part of that? I'm trying to recall.
Chairwood, trustee Vanducci, I don't believe so. What I believe we're speaking of now is if we close that street as part of the master plan for pedestrian usage. But I, I don't believe that study envisioned it moving off of that site.
So maybe we'll learn more about that with this feasibility study.
Sure.
Okay, board, any further questions? We need, this is an action item, so I need a motion. Trustee Howard?
I'd like to move to authorize the administration to contract with an architectural firm an amount not to exceed $75,000 on a study into the suitability of Christianson Gymnasium for long-term future use.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Discussion? Further discussion? Trustee Vanducci.
Do we, seventy-five's gonna be enough? Do we know?
Chair Wood, Trustee Vanducci, we, we believe so based on the, the price of the prior study.
Okay. Cause we, this list in the course of kind of the seventy-five to eighty-five, whatever, and we've said not to exceed, but we still, we're comfortable with that number.
Okay. Chair Wood, we do?
Okay.
Sorry, I was kind of processing through that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. We look forward to that. I guess I should have asked you what the timeframe.
We anticipate having that ready to be presented to the Board in the fall.
Fall. Okay. Thank you. And that moves us to tab four. I guess you can stay where you're at. First reading of our FY 20 general fund budget. Chris Martin.
Chair Wood, members of the Board, it, it seems a little bit odd to come to you and ask to present the proposal for the FY 2020 budget. That still feels like it should be a long way off, and I'm afraid it's not. So appreciate you giving us the opportunity tonight to, to share with you the proposal. This is a first reading. Have a brief presentation here that will follow along. I will make note that each board member received a packet today. This packet receives, reflects some updates from the one-on-one individual meetings that we have to walk through the budget. And so we have had the chance to meet individually with board members, just to, to prepare them for this presentation, and this reflects some of the requested edits. Just to begin, as kind of a setting the stage for how we got to where we are with the FY 2020 budget, just want to remind the board members that we actually modeled two different scenarios as we went into this fiscal year. As, as you're aware, the legislature was considering a proposal for outcomes-based funding. We modeled that and looked at what that would impact the, the campus, and it was actually quite favorable to NIC. And we also modeled an existing structure, excuse me, using the enrollment workload adjustment. Therefore, our theme this year as we approach a budget was flexibility. And we worked really closely with each division and department to, to build that flexibility and that idea, idea of flexibility into our discussions because this year was going to be such a unique year, not knowing how funding would happen. And so that flexibility, I think, served us well in the end. This is a flat budget. Only thing that's included is mandatory increases related to contracts or accreditation. So as we went through this process, it became very obvious that choice two that we modeled, which was enrollment workload adjustment, was going to be the, the funding situation that we were faced with this particular fiscal year. What's unique about this year compared to other years is with the enrollment workload adjustment, typically the college receives line item funding from the state legislature. This year, there were no line item requests, and there was no line item funding granted. So you'll note as we go through this budget that our overall year-over-year state appropriation was a reduction. Planning assumptions that we looked at this year is forecasting flat enrollment for traditional, for credit enrollments across campus. We have done a good job of managing the enrollment over the past several years, and this year we're, we're forecasting to, to make that flat. We're also forecasting a five percent increase of enrollment in dual credit. You may remember that this past year, the budget was built on a twenty-five percent increase of enrollment for dual credit. So we're being more conservative in our approach this year as we really look at the lay of the land compared to dual credit in the past and take into account that our team's done a really great job promoting dual credit across North Idaho. And so we're seeing the market, if you will, mature around dual credit. And so we want to be reflective of, of that change. The tuition proposal this year was based on an assumption of a two dollar and fifty cent per credit increase for in-district students and a three dollar and fifty cent per credit increase for non-district students. Also included in the proposal this year is a ten dollar per credit increase for dual credit students. And this is in line with what every other college in the state is, is moving towards for this fiscal year. It will move dual credit classes from sixty-five dollars per credit hour to seventy-five dollars per credit hour, which would still be covered by fast-forward funding.
I was gonna say, yeah, that was mandated, well, I won't say mandated by the state, but that's what the state is covering with, with increased funding.
Absolutely. The State Board of Education met last week. They approved this increase for the four-year institutions, and it's still within the coverage of, of the fast-forward funding that's available to families and high school students.
Can I ask one more question? We may not have an answer to this, and maybe this is more for Rick, or I'm not sure, but last year, we got caught flat-footed and they allowed us, not, not because we weren't prepared, but just because the way the system kind of worked against us and the other colleges, and we had no line items after we went from outcomes-based funding. Do we have any sense if we're gonna, if we don't transition outcome-based funding and we stay this way, are we gonna get line items, or is there a way that we can lobby to get line items? Is there, how do we, how do we hope to approach that, or am I premature in asking that question?
So we have received the schedule for budget submission for line, line items. So they are, the process that we would normally go through to develop and submit them has been activated. What we don't know yet, and we met with the governor this afternoon, the process and timeline that will happen relative to the outcomes-based funding discussion. He did state that he is not opposed to it. It was just that in year one, there was enough uncertainty that, you know, it required us to hit the pause button on that. So the sense that I'm getting is that absent a change in the funding formula or something that changes the way the resources are allocated from the state, at least from the eight public institutions, there will be a strong push to have line items included in the process. And we're going to go through that work to develop those, really beginning now. We, we start that work now, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Other planning assumptions that were built into this proposal was a one percent proposed levy increase for the taxing district and a change in employee compensation that includes a step increase for all general fund, full-time staff and faculty, the state-mandated increase in Percy contributions, and there is no change in benefit costs.
Chris, you, you want to review for the Board what we've done in the last, well, I think we could go back at least to twenty thirteen, as far as any kind of a tax increase to the county residents?
So we did do it, we did do a tax increase in twenty thirteen. We took a one percent in twenty thirteen that went towards the capital reserve. So that was placed into the capital reserve. That increased that annual allocation. And then, not last year, but the year before, we took a one percent tax increase.
So from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, we took a zero, correct?
Uh, no, we've taken two percent from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen.
Twenty-six seventeen, we took.
Yep. But you're correct. From twenty eighteen, I'm sorry, I heard twenty thirteen. I apologize.
Okay.
So you were correct.
Okay.
I was going back to twenty thirteen.
All right. And then in twenty, the year we're in, we took a zero percent?
Correct.
All right. And so the proposal from, coming forward from administration is at least a one percent for FY 2020?
Correct.
Okay. And you're explaining to us, this is what we need to pay for?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So in, in your packet, you have this on, on page two, and I apologize for the audience. These numbers are probably small, but wanted to provide this just as a brief walkthrough for the Board. I'm happy to answer any questions, but there's a couple of pieces here that are important for us to note as we go through the proposed revenue for next fiscal year. The state funding is a reduction year-over-year of two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars, and that is the net of many changes. And so with the state funding, the first thing we had to do this year was remove over three-hundred thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars we received last fiscal year for the development of the computer science lab. And so that was a one-time fund, funding request. That work is, is ongoing right this minute. We're almost through with that computer lab, but we don't have that going into this fiscal year. From the state this year, what we received was fifty-four thousand, five-hundred dollars in assistance with benefit costs and two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, seven-hundred dollars in support of change in employee compensation. The college also received one-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, four-hundred dollars, which was half of the typical allocation for occupancy costs that would support the new North Idaho Collaborative Education Facility. We also received an enrollment workload adjustment of a negative two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, one-hundred dollars. So the net of all of those changes is still a reduction year-over-year from last year's appropriation of over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. I apologize, over two-hundred thousand dollars. It's two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, five-hundred dollars. The CTE funding, all that includes, there is an increase this year. It's the support for the change in benefit costs of twenty-six thousand, four-hundred dollars, and the state's support of change for employee compensation for CTE faculty. Other pieces I would just draw your attention to, there's revenue sharing from other funds in that bottom quadrant. That is support that Workforce Training Center, through their net income, is providing in support of the larger college. It was a fantastic job by the team there. That's, that's new this year. Wanted to make you aware of that. There's also a line for estimated salary salvage. We typically have positions that unfortunately come open, and as you may can expect, are not filled immediately. And so in the gap between those, when those positions are open and when they're filled, we're accounting for that savings, so it doesn't just roll through to fund balance.
Chris, back to the workforce training. This, from what I understand, this is really the first year that we've been able to see some of that revenue sharing, which is a great success to what they're doing out there. It wasn't like that for a lot of years, and I just think it's being ran very well. The fact that there can be some revenue sharing back with the main campus is fantastic. So please pass along the good, good work.
Absolutely. Believe me, there's been a lot of high fives from our office
Yeah.
in support of that. So we're very thankful for instruction, all that they do. The other piece that I will just bring your attention to is last year, the Board authorized us to do some fund balance transfers. And we essentially covered part of our budget last year with over five-hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance. And we made that request because it was a great year of uncertainty, because we weren't sure if it was going to be outcomes-based funding or enrollment workload adjustment. I hesitate to tell you today, we're not sure this upcoming year, Trustee Vanducci, if it's going to be outcomes-based funding or enrollment workload adjustment. But this budget does not propose using fund balance this fiscal year. And so that's, that's fully covered in this proposal. So overall, for revenue, it's a one-point-four-three percent increase in revenue at seven-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars.
On the other revenue, in the footnote, it says includes contribution from NIC Foundation. Was that NIC Foundation contribution directed at a particular project?
Chair Wood, Trustee Howard, it is. It's, it's support for innovation.
Pardon?
It's support for innovation.
Okay.
On page three of, of your-
Do-
Go ahead.
I have a couple of thoughts I'd like to share.
Absolutely.
Three, four, actually. One, one of the small changes, and I appreciate it, was you broke out the in-district versus out-of-district, so we could see it more clearly rather than having the whole two-fifty on the line and then adding the dollar. So I like, the clarity is better now than how we had it when we foresaw it. But secondly, I, I'm not keen on the in-district tuition increase. I'm not keen on the property tax increase. And I'm not keen at, I'm gonna do good things for full-time, but once again, I don't have the part-time and adjunct faculty included in being rewarded also. So, just three comments, I guess.
Thank you.
Well, per policy, the adjunct is not part of the step. And so that would be something we would, you could make that proposal outside of the process.
Which I have done previously.
Okay. And then the tuition, once again, that's going to be up to the Board and, and any kind of property tax increase. And we're all ears here from the Board, what direction they'd like to go. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, the next, next page, and, and I just want to highlight a couple of things here. Won't, won't drag this on too long, but, excuse me. You'll notice that this year, as we talked about our planning assumptions, the only thing that was added into this budget were mandatory increases that were either statutory, contractual, or due to accreditation. And so Dr. McClennan highlighted this, and I'd like to just also share my appreciation to people across campus. Campus worked really, really hard on this budget, and so overall this year, there was a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollar increase. And that is clearly attributable to a number of things that were required, such as we have some software licenses, if you will, that have automatic escalators on those every, every year for two to three percent. Those are the types of things that were captured, and all of those had to be justified and re-justified. And so that number, on our level of a budget, to have that increase at a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars, people were diligent with only things that had to be increased. And so not including salary step increases this year, the budget grew by point-three percent or a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. On that next bottom of the page there, you'll see the impact of the cost for the step. And all in this year for the cost of step is five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Part of what's driving that increase differently than we've seen in years past is this mandatory increase that Percy's putting in this year. And so that's the contribution both by the employee and by the employer, NIC, that we're, we're putting in towards employee retirement. So on the following page, we just wanted to show the impact with the step increase. So all in, the budget would go up by seven-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars, a one-point-four percent increase. Again, five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars of that seven-hundred-and-ten is all tied to the step increase and the related retirement impact.
Okay.
Just to note, we, this, we bring this up every single year, but our budget is, is really heavy on personnel. And just as a side note, seventy-point-six-five percent of our budget is, is personnel. It's salary and benefit costs. On page six is a graph that, that we've come to, to show and the Board has asked questions about in the past that really reflects how we receive our funding and what that looks like year-over-year. And so this trend, that line across the top there is our projected enrollment. But what I'd like to point out to the Board is the college is committed to ensuring that tuition does not make up more than thirty-three-point-three percent of our revenue streams. So we want to be really mindful that we share the load with students and we don't put the load on students. And so we try really, really hard as a college. That's a commitment that we have to manage that. And so you'll see this year, twenty-seven percent of, of the revenue would come, for the general fund, would come from student tuition and fees. On page seven, this is an enrollment breakdown that, just to kind of give a picture, as you're aware, our, our enrollment makeup is shifting and therefore our revenue mix is shifting. And so the intent of this is just to, to help us all stay informed on the fact that dual credit is, is making a big difference in our enrollment mix. So we've seen flat growth, and part of that is the fact that dual credit students are making up the difference compared to traditional enrollment. So that dark blue line is academic enrollment. That top blue line is all academic enrollment, including dual credit. And so you'll see the, the two solid lines there. The two solid lines is pure, traditional academic students, and that bottom solid line is dual credit students. And so those, those are merging together, and so we're seeing a shift in our enrollment that's pretty one-for-one there. Trustee Howard?
Looking at the chart on page seven, I'm assuming that as we look at those trends, that's the basis on which you're making the, the forecast that there will be flat enrollment next year? All of those components equate to a flat enrollment?
Working together, yes, sir.
Okay.
Just would make one note. This, this has come up, and I think it's important to note that CTE has been relatively stable. And, and you'll see that number across the bottom there. That yellowish number, that yellowish line represents CTE enrollment. And we continue to have unprecedented, which is a wonderful thing, low, low, low unemployment rates for our region, but it continues to have an impact on our enrollment within CTE programs. I would draw your attention through pages nine through eleven, just to highlight a couple of things again on tuition. We talked about that. Trustee Vanducci, thank you for your, your comments on tuition. The two dollar and fifty cent increase for, per credit for in-district students equates to a one-point-seven-seven percent increase and creates a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars in tuition revenue. The non-district student, that rate, obviously the denominator there is, is driving that difference, is a lower percentage, but we are proposing a three dollar and fifty cent across the board for all different statuses of non-district students. And would like to highlight continued waiver of student accident insurance for this year. This will be the third year that we've waived that fee, and that's, that saves students eleven dollars off, off the top. Page thirteen is a popular slide, and want to just spend a couple of minutes on this. This is the capital reserve that the Board sets aside, and just as an update- This is the capital reserve that the board sets aside, and just as an update to where we are on that, there's always questions and concerns about updating this. So, would just like to note where we are. And so, for the end of this fiscal year, which is the FY 2019 projection, on June 30th, we're forecasting $11.875 million in the board capital reserve. That includes the $1 million that's been earmarked for property acquisition. So, in our previous conversations, some of you saw a different number there, and it did not include the property acquisition fund. So, altogether, within the board reserve, you'll see that number. And then, for FY 2020, what we're forecasting at the end of next fiscal year is $14.57 million.
And Chris, let's talk about the capital reserve a little bit, because we would want people to understand that there are projects in process we're working on.
Absolutely.
We have quite a few that the board's identified in workshops, such as Meyer Health Science, which has this big price tag. So, it's not like it's just a big old savings account that's earmarked. There's, this money is already really spoken for, correct?
That is correct. So, $8 million of this is already earmarked, as you'll know, for the Meyer Health Science project. And with that, we've spent time together almost every single month for the past five months on facility planning workshops with the board, outlining all the needs of the college and what those look like, and prioritizing those with the board. And so, they're not reflected on here, because we haven't received authorization to move forward on those projects, but there's absolutely a plan for these dollars, and it's not just sitting there with no use.
Thank you.
Chair Wood.
Yes, Trustee Banducci.
Hey, Chris. Since I, once again, had the privilege of being the first trustee to go at this round, and changes and things come, we noted, and you researched that number, so glad we got that. But in addition to the property acquisition reserve, I noticed we've made an adjustment on the interest also.
We have.
Okay. And where did we find the extra $60,000?
The original, the original plan that trustee Banducci was shown did not include any interest related to, it didn't include the $1 million for the property acquisition fund or any related interest.
Okay, so that's, we get two line items affected by that. Okay, I want to make sure I was clear on that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Well, the fee and service units are there. I'm happy to answer any questions on those. The grants and contracts are on page 16.
Yeah, just going back to page 13 a minute. I guess, I don't know how you show this in a budget, but if we're looking at fiscal year 19 projection, which is, the balance is what we'd have on June 30th, that may be the balance, but we're taking $8 million out pretty quick. So, really, the balance is more like $3,800,000. And then, in '20, it's going to reduce the $14 million down to, so I, these projections about that amount of money doesn't reflect, they're already committed, $8 million, give or take. How do you show that in the budget?
Chair Wood, Trustee Howard, I have one clarification. The board authorized us to move into design work for the Meyer Health and Science Building. We would come back to the board for authorization to actually execute the construction project based on that design. And so, that's why it's not reflected currently. We can make a note that says proposed construction in FY '20 and reflect that, or expected construction, but the reason it's not shown is because we have not actually received authorization to move forward on the construction.
Okay, and I understand that, but it would be helpful, I think, because you tend to look at the bottom line number and say, oh, goodness gracious, we've got $11 million. We don't. You know, we've already committed, and it'd be better for me, anyway, to know that that commitment is reflected in the budget someplace, at least estimated.
Absolutely. We can show the estimated cost of that project.
Okay, thanks.
Chair Wood, I maybe even suggest going a step further, and for the known capital projects that we have in front of us, for example, Headland renovation, others that we've talked about, and we've put some cursory pricing on, if we're going to have some sort of a projected or estimated, we wouldn't, it'd be helpful to put all of those in there, because they're going to far exceed whatever we are saving right now, they're in process. So, we'll take a look at that.
That would be helpful. I mean, we just did $75,000 today for that study. I suspect that's coming out of that fund, I don't know.
And even though it's in there, your $3 million plus is really $2 million plus because of the $1 million for property acquisition. So, we can clarify that a little more future-oriented, even though the board hasn't acted to do any of those things yet, it's still in the planning stage.
Absolutely. In the interest of time, I can answer any questions on grants and contracts or the fee and service units, but the consolidated budget for the institution is on page 17, the last page of your proposal. And just to note where we come out for the year, the, again, the general fund budget for next fiscal year is proposed at $49.8 million, with a total institutional budget of $64.4 million. And that includes all general funds, fees, services, and grants.
Chair Wood.
Trustee Banducci.
Chris, you were briefly touching on 16, till we reverted back to 13. Were you going to point out that the grants number has changed significantly on that page?
Happy to do that. On page 16 on the grants, what we had proposed originally, we typically just use our year-end. We don't forecast that forward. We have changed and forecasted that forward for the grants, and the biggest change there is it includes the addition of the EDA I-6 grant for rapid prototyping. That's our biggest change year over year.
Board, any questions on the budget proposal, ideas? Trustee Howard? One second, Todd.
I want to go back to the, to the revenue. The proposal in the budget that you talked to us about is 250 per-credit hour for in-district students, which would raise about $135,500, give or take, and a 1% tax increase, which would raise $152,996. I would like to see us not raise the in-district student tuition at all this year. We've raised it almost every year. And we have not, we've been very judicious about tax increases. We've been, I think, pretty good stewards of our responsibility to the taxpayers. I think, as you went over a little bit earlier, between 2013 and 2018, we had basically a 1% tax increase. And we probably developed, in that forgone tax category, quite a credit, that I, I think that we've been very good about not raising taxes, but we've been shifting it slowly onto the backs of the students. I'd like to see us do a 2% tax increase and then not do the in-district student tuition increase.
Chris, can we go to page 10? And this will get to the heart of what trustee Howard's talking about, and compare our tuition with other institutions?
So, on page 10, you'll see the breakdown of what we have an awareness of today for regional colleges and universities that are in our area. At this time, CSI has not made an announcement regarding their tuition. CWI and CEI are all, at this point, not raising tuition for students at all. Spokane Falls and Spokane Community College have not made announcements. And the four-year institutions in Idaho, the State Board of Education approved tuition and fees last week, and those went up an average of 5% across the Idaho institutions.
Okay.
I would like to note that the NIC number is higher than our peers, but what's driving that increase in overall tuition and fee cost with us compared to CWI and CSI specifically is the cost of the student rec center fee. So, that has about $100 a year impact on our reflection compared to our peers.
And that's going to be for quite some time.
It will be.
Okay.
Well, I don't know. One of those bonds is going to retire in 2021, and we can shift some of that bond payment over.
We could, we could reduce the fee at that time.
So, that's only a two-year timeframe.
Okay. Okay, so that's something for the board to keep in mind, you would rather see no impact to in-district tuition, but to make up that revenue, a 2% tax increase.
Correct.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Well, I'd shared with Chris and Sarah just some ideas about tuition freeze, but Chris pointed out that something that I think's forgotten, at least by general public, is the free three credits for kids taking beyond 15 credits. But I'm also in the boat of saying, I really don't want to see a tuition increase, so that's just where I'm at at this time.
I had some thoughts on, I know Todd wants to talk about adjunct, but I had some thoughts on, beyond the step, my concern is that we need to pay attention to the base. And last year, we did a half a percent toward the base, and I would be interested in seeing the cost on that. I'm going to estimate a little over $100,000.
Correct.
And I know it's ongoing cost, but my concern is, if we don't constantly keep up with that at some five, six years down the road, we're going to have a big bill. And so, I would like some consideration for that. I think our fund balance could handle that. So, that's my proposal for y'all to think about. Todd, did you have a comment?
Just a question for Chris on 17, and we get back to that, but I can hold off a moment.
No, you're up.
Chris, just looking at some of the line items on 17 and a few of the changes, a couple of them make sense to me because of the adjustment to the grants and a couple other things. Services, though, popped up a pretty significant number on the top line under tuition and fee revenue, and so, there's some changes as it filters down, which then got us from about the $183,000 to about $504,000 on the budget on the net income line. Did we, but there's also some shifting, the other revenue, the other revenue line went down, so I'm kind of, can you talk to me a little bit about that? I mean, overall, that's a pretty big positive change. So, I'm looking kind of at that middle column on page 17 on the chart under the services header.
Absolutely. If you actually look at page 15, it's a breakout of the service unit budgets. It's the detail that makes that number up.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is I'm looking at what I looked at with you guys, and that number was blank there, and then down below where it's now says 869, it said about $1.4 million and change. So, a couple of numbers shifted around, it looks like, I'm just trying to understand that.
I don't have that original packet in front of me, but I'm happy to work with you on that, and we can determine what those changes were line by line.
Are there any other proposals the board would like the administration to consider and bring back to us in writing, in the second reading?
Can you summarize what you think they are at this point?
Sure.
And then, we can...
Trustee Howard has indicated he'd like to see no increase in in-state tuition and a 2% tax increase.
In-district tuition, you mean?
In-district, thank you. And I have indicated I'd like to see, paid for out of the fund balance, a half a percent toward the base, so that we stay current with, as best we can with our base.
Brad, were you just kind of seconding what Ken said, then?
Well, possibly. Maybe not fully, maybe less than 2%, but no, I am with the no increase for in-district, but the percentage, you know, I could be persuaded.
Maybe we could find out what that would cost. Dr. McLennan.
I was just going to say that we were asked in one of the presentations to show the impact on taxpayers.
Yes.
You had that chart in front of you, at a 1, 2, and 3% tax increase.
Do we have that in front of us? Where do I have that?
You have that right here.
Oh, thank you, yes. Appreciate that.
So, this is the year-over-year review of our levy rates and any proposal for a 1%, 2%, or 3% increase, and the impact that has to homeowners.
That a monthly increase?
That is the increase.
A year, for a year.
Annually.
That's correct.
So, a 2% increase on a $400,000 taxable is about $6.81, as I see it, something like that?
Correct.
$6.81.
On a 400?
On $400,000 taxable.
$5.22. $5.22.
With the exemption, with the exemption. Yep.
There's still $100,000 exemption, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, it's capped.
Okay. So, that would, we'd be looking at the 2%, you said $5.22?
For $400,000.
Increase for a full year, not a month?
Correct.
Right? Okay. All right.
I would just also note for the board's information, you have the full fee proposal in front of you as well. We're not going to go through that tonight, but I want to make sure you have that. If you have questions, we're open to answering those. I would note, more than any year that I've seen, there are significant reductions or eliminations of fees, and so, I want to just provide my appreciation to the leadership and instruction who did such a diligent, excuse me, diligent job this year reviewing fees. It's really a positive move in many, many ways.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Chairman Wood.
Yeah, trustee Banducci.
So, on your list, you had .5 to the base, you had zero in-district tuition, but potentially 2% property tax. Okay, I also said zero in-district, but I also opposed the property tax. And then, do we get a line item to find out what it costs for the adjunct and part-time?
Absolutely.
To match the, what are you proposing?
The 2% match, same, yeah. Joe, you're with me on this, right? That we take care of the part-time and the adjunct faculty?
Absolutely.
I know this one's near and dear to your heart.
Board, any further instruction, discussion? We'll take this up again at the next meeting. I'd like to personally thank Chris and Dr. McLennan and Sarah for the one-on-one meetings with the board, walk us through your budget proposals. You take a lot of time with us, and we appreciate it. You fully prepare us when we come to the meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Worth it, though.
Well worth it, yes. Okay, this will take us on to our information item, our community utilization of North Idaho College facilities, Grayden Stanley.
Thank you, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues, and guests, again. I'd like to introduce someone who has joined me here this evening as well, Justin Van Eaton is back here. I think most of you know Justin. He's been around here just a few years and currently serves as our Director of Conferencing and Events. And so, as we're talking about this subject, Justin certainly has a long background in working with that, and I want to thank him and his staff for all the work they've done. Today's a good example, probably, of that. It had a lot to do with the setup of this room, and we had about four other events going on on campus all day today, so they've been running like crazy. That happens pretty often, so I appreciate their good work. I want to thank President McLennan for some of the guidance that he gave a couple of years ago relative to a bit of a change in our philosophy for the community use of our facilities. Also, want to recognize a number of the trustees who have had conversations about this as well, as you're connected to our community, too. That concern has been, and I know it initially came out in some of the community forum work that the president did a few years ago, was a concern expressed from community members and organizations about their access to facilities here on our campus. Oftentimes, that access was a bit prohibitive based on the cost that it may be to them to utilize our facilities. So, some of the guidance that we were given in the events area is, let's take a look at about how we can bring more of these organizations to our campus or back on our campus when they had a history with this before. Some of the guidance that was given to us then is to, let's look at the cost of that, let's look at the services that we provide, and let's see what we can do to make that more affordable. Recently, we've been having conversations with a number of groups which you're probably familiar with. One of those was the Cord Lane Summer Theater that had been here up until about five years ago, and I've met with them a couple of different times. Justin has been a part of those conversations as well. I'm excited to announce that they're very excited about coming back to our campus. In fact, this summer, their rehearsals will be taking place over in our Student Wellness and Recreation Center. We have space that's not highly utilized during the summer, as you would know, people want to be outdoors, and we don't have as many students on our campus. So, they're leasing some of our facility for some of their rehearsal space that they usually have in a warehouse that doesn't fit their needs. So, they were very excited. We were also excited about generating some other revenue that will offset the expense of students as they pay for the Student Wellness and Recreation Center. Because our facility, Shooter Performing Arts Center, is undergoing some construction facility, Schuler Performing Arts Center, is undergoing some construction this summer, we have limited use. The replacement of, there were funds provided for the replacement of seats in that facility. So as much as Cordillane Summer, Summer Theater and others may have liked to have gotten back into the building this summer, that's, we're unable to do that because of the construction that'll be taking place in there. But Cordillane Summer Theater is looking forward to working with us to bring productions actually back on our campus next year. Some others that we've had beginning conversations with include the Cordillane Symphony, the Cordillane Opera, and most recently, Cordillane Charter, Charter School. They've been having an event here every spring, coming back this spring, and their costs are substantially reduced from what they've been in the past, based on a philosophy that we've adopted. And that philosophy comes from, from your concern, from the president's concern. And essentially, what we have done is we, we've priced things out, as we have in the past, that had to do with the, the cost of the facility, utilizing the facility. There was a rental charge. And then there were labor and technology charges, the cost of our personnel that help operate that facility, the cost of the utilization of some of the technology. There were also some custodial costs associated with that as well. We've begun operating more on a philosophy that says the facilities are paid for, if you will. We own these facilities, and we don't necessarily have a direct cost that we need to pass along to consumers for the rental of it. But we do need to recover the cost oftentimes for our personnel to cover that. This is often evening and weekend work. It oftentimes will involve overtime work or flexing hours because of their regular schedule Monday through Friday. And so we try to recover that cost of personnel, technology, if it's extraordinary cost to us, or we have to rent equipment to accommodate their needs, we would pass along that cost as well. That has resulted, resulted in a substantial reduction in cost for most of these programs. And as we work with the symphony and the opera and Cordillane Charter and Summer Theater, they're going to see substantial reduction in their costs that I think will make this very attractive. Certainly, Cordillane Summer Theater has seen that already. Cordillane Charter has seen that as well. Part of what we've asked for, let me, let me stay with the process for just a second. As we have these applications that come forward that ask for our use, we go ahead and price them out accordingly. We usually are looking at eliminating that cost for the use of the facility itself. And then these are often routed to our, our group that takes a look at that. Besides the conference and event, events folks, our three vice presidents, Dr. Burns and Chris Martin and myself, will review those. And they can either appeal to that committee, or in many cases, because it's groups, groups that are already recognized in our community, we look at it on the front side and say, no, this is what we want to charge. This group is important to the institution. It's important to the community. We want to make sure that they have access to our campus. So on the front side, we'll say, we're only going to charge this kind of rate. This is the value that they hold to the institution. In other cases, we may not see that on the front side, but that group can appeal. And when they appeal, again, it comes to the vice presidents, and we make a determination and recommendation about the value of that entity toward our, toward our core values, the community engagement part, the stewardship part, the diversity part, the educational excellence. And we also look for an opportunity for the, the college to capitalize, if you will, on their presence on our campus. What we've asked these organizations to do is to allow us access to their patrons when they come on to campus, that we want to be able to. Prior to the starting of a show, for example, we want to be able to have a video that may show, we'll be working with communications and marketing on that, that talks about North Idaho College and, and all of the assets that we have. We'd be setting up a table in the lobby where we could talk to people coming in there. We want to be able to provide literature, information for all the patrons who come in as well. So it's a win-win situation. We get connection with a lot of our community members and patrons coming into their event. They get a reduction in the cost, so it's a win for both sides of that. So we're excited about that. And everybody we've proposed that to, like Cordillane Summer Theater, has said absolutely. We'd love for you to be, be a part of that as well. And that, that's essentially what we've been, been operating of, of right now. We'll be continuing to develop that as we work through these organizations. We have a long history of, of different groups, from the ones that I've already mentioned to different school groups you're aware of this year, after an absence of a number of years, the Martin Luther King Celebration, through the president's connections was brought back onto our campus. Part of the reason they'd left was it was unaffordable and a bit inaccessible to them. With the president's leadership and the support of our events folks, they were back on our campus in January as well. And we intend to continue to host that. So, so I think we're on the right path for making sure that, that these are community facilities. This is a community college. We want to make sure that, that our campus and its facilities are accessible to these different groups who would like to, to utilize them, at the same time being good stewards of the assets of this institution and the taxpayers of Kootenay County.
Fantastic. Did you want to comment?
Just, just, just add a few things or enhance a few things. One, I just appreciate the way you introduced this, Grayden, on just the volume of activity today. I don't think many, even in our internal campus community, recognize or understand the sheer volume, just even in Schuler. Schuler's inside a building, so you don't, you don't see it unless you're in the building. But the sheer volume of use our facilities get. The second is that in all of this, we want to make it clear internally and externally that these facilities are first and foremost for the use of North Idaho College and fulfilling its mission. And so I want to be really clear that, and there have been some examples in recent history where some of our internal use has maybe not had first priority over, over an external use. So that's, that's one thing. And then the other thing is, one question that keeps coming up for me, and I, and I know it will come up for others, and we run some risk here in the way that, that we're going through this, is being consistent, or the perception that we're inconsistent in the application of costing practices or access practices. So, and that's why you have this at the VP level first. And second, as we go through this and overlay the experience of this year, that overlay will express itself into more consistent practices. We're moving away from, you know, one end of a continuum of really, and this is no statement about any past administrations, or, but it's a pretty harsh application of, of that access to a, a more, what's in our interest as an institution. You know, with those fifth graders who were in here for Martin Luther King Junior, that celebration, how wonderful it would have been to have some age-appropriate presentations, whether they're video or other types of things, for them to engage with us and, you know, that right, that right age-level messaging about what life after high school might look like for them, or what they might think about along the way. So I guess, you know, I'm aware that there's a, you know, a potential for inconsistency, but I think, given the response that we've had from many in our community about our current practice, the movement that we're taking now is definitely moving us in a better direction. And it's worth taking those risks as we try to work, work our way through this.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Howard?
I applaud the, the change in policy and moving toward the community use of the facilities. This may have a budgetary impact on us. And are we making provisions for that? And I guess I think there are going to be probably people who apply for use of the facilities. And I'm thinking of Sorenson, for instance, grade school. They put on performances, and they try and crowd them in their gym, and they don't have room. And I think they've inquired about using our facilities, but we're unable to afford them. So they may get to a point where they just don't have any money at all. Do we have any kind of thought about subsidizing those through some kind of funding so that they don't have to pay much at all by way of use fee?
Chairman Wood and Trustee Howard, why we haven't established such a fund, I want to give an example of something that just happened recently, and, and with credit to Justin and his team. We set this up in some way to, to be at the point that it was, to charge what we were for the use of facilities by our practice. A number of years ago, we went to the point where we said a lot of the expenses that, that were a part of the operation of Schuler particularly, had to be generated by their operations. So some of the pricing was associated with their need to pay their own way. And so we set that up in, in, in a sense, and forced some of that pricing. In rearranging this, a good example of what we just did recently, Justin had submitted forward a couple needs that they would have had to pay for in the past. One of those was a new curtain. The curtain that they have, there is not a fire.
It's longer fire rated.
It's, it's not fire rated in the way it should and needed to be replaced. It's a little over a ten thousand dollar expenditure. The lighting in there needed to be replaced, and it's, it's over a three-year period. This first year's twenty thousand dollars to do that. In the past, Justin and his crew would have been working to generate funds to, to meet those expenses. We just went through a process at the end of our budget year through some savings and funds to accommodate that. And so we came up with that money to pay through the institution for that expense. So as we work through this, while we haven't set aside a sun, a fund, we're certainly going to be looking for opportunities to underwrite, to find sponsorship, to have other ways to cover some of those expenses. It's going to be a little bit tighter for us. Even some of our operation, to Justin's credit and his team, they operate or want to always operate a five-star service. And sometimes it may be that, that because of the expense, because of the personnel involved, maybe we can't deliver five-star, but maybe that's not what an organization needs. Maybe they need a four-star or a three-star service. I'm proud of the work that we've done, but with the resources that we put into it, maybe we don't have to deliver at that same level. And the customer's not going to, to necessarily need that.
Okay. Thank you.
Good point. Well, I think there has been a lot of pressure on Justin and his staff and to really to operate as an auxiliary budget, even though they're not recognized as an auxiliary budget. So we're going in the right direction, Justin. And I do appreciate all of your work on this. I can tell you those fifth graders that, from Cordillane High School and Postables High School, it makes sense, as you've said, Dr. McLennan, yeah, we want fifth graders on this campus. We want to show them what college is about. And so these are common sense decisions. And I, certainly the community groups that Trustee Howard's talking to, those are common sense decisions too. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That takes us to the board chair report. And I do not have a report. I'm ready to pass on the report. And so remarks to the good of the order.
Only my way of a question. And so we can all sort of anticipate this. The last time we had on the agenda nominating a first reading for Judy Meyer to be our...
Emeritus.
Emeritus. Thank you. Our first emeritus. And I was just wondering if we have established some kind of a process for doing that. We have to have the second reading on it, but are we going to have a separate date for a celebration of that, where we can stand around and have some coffee and cake and that sort of thing? Or what, what are we going to do? Because this is the first time that we've done this, and do we have something in mind about how we're going to go through it?
The president does have a great plan. Go ahead.
Okay, I, so what Chairman Wood and I talked about would be something similar to this evening with the tenure celebration, to have the agenda item moved up to the front of the meeting and have food and beverage outside of the, the room and adjourn briefly to then celebrate. In, in preparation for that, we've taken the background that was for the, used for the first reading and began creating a resolution in a resolution format that could be read at the board meeting. We'll circulate that to the board as we take those ideas. But if you have specific whereas language that you'd like to see in a resolution, get that to Shannon, and we'll make sure that we incorporate that in there. But there's a, we have a lot of good background already, but so that the idea would be then to present that, act upon it, celebrate it, and then reconvene the board meeting afterwards, the day of the board meeting.
Do we have some kind of memento, a plaque, whatever, that's going to be a tradition when we do the emeritus?
Pardon me, Shannon?
A resolution.
The resolution will be framed.
Will be framed. And with our emeritus status comes the lifetime parking, the lifetime athletic.
All the rights appertaining there unto, yeah.
Yes. Trustee Vanducci?
I was hoping, and maybe you have it, there was a letter being prepared for your signature for our submission for the conference in October.
I signed it.
Okay, good.
Done.
So I guess for the good order, we are preparing to go present in October as a college.
Yeah, it'll be great. Okay, so the next board meeting, our former trustee Meyer has indicated she can be here, and the anticipation that since we've nominated her, the anticipation that we will approve this. And so we'll celebrate with her then. Anything else for the good of the order? With that, I adjourn. Hey, I don't want to touch that.